But we would like to call our meeting to order at this time. Mr. Sealy will lead it, Mr. Underwood will lead us an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Can we please stand?
Oh wise and eternal God, our Father, once again we come before you asking for your blessings over this meeting tonight. Heavenly Father, continue to bless us to do the best that we can for the citizens of Caroline County. Heavenly Father, continue to bless our first responders and all those who are in service at home and abroad. We give all thanks to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sealy. All right, we generally start with opening board comments and we will start off with you, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few. First of all, want to thank everyone who came out to Mr. Forehand and I. I know Mr. Forehand is, I'm not here this evening, but I want to thank everyone who came out to the constituent meeting, our constituent meeting last Monday at County Line Baptist Church. We have another one tomorrow night in Lady Smith Village at their clubhouse, starting at 6:30. Lots of good information that we'll be covering, data centers, schools, the whole bit. So that is next, that is tomorrow night, our second one, Lady Smith Village at 6:30. I did want to, once again, and it's very, very frustrating, point out, I know, Madam Chair, you got something in the mail. All my constituents did as well. Aqua Virginia is, once again, two years later, going up on their rates. And the data that we have provided by Mr. Sheeble, who does an excellent job with us, our public utilities, the average customer now, if you are served by Aqua Virginia Water and Sewer, so you're talking Lake Heritage, Bridlewood, for 5,000 gallons, you'll be paying $253.90 a month for water and sewer. So $253.90, so if you do the math on that, that's around $3,000 a year. So if you figure that's like, would be twice a tax rate for many homes here in Caroline. So that's the burden that they are, those constituents are facing right now. And the service has not improved with these rate increases. As a matter of fact, some may argue that the service has gone downhill. Finally, I would like to wish my condolences to Carrie Bowen from the passing of Judge Kelly. Judge Kelly served here in Caroline for a while, and for quite a while. And she would actually, later on, she would come to our trivia nights here and at the timbers when we have them in Lady Smith. Very excellent lady, and she swore me into office, I believe, my first time. So condolences to her family. She was a stellar lady and an excellent citizen for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Yes, I think she will be missed greatly. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually attended the viewing and met Mr. Bowen this afternoon to pay respects to Judge Kelly and the family. So as Mr. Black said, she was a judge here for quite some time, a very fair judge. And I believe she also swore me in at one time during my service here. The other things I have is, it's a little premature, but I saw something on Facebook that I've confirmed as for the most part true, that the Caroline Schools Hall of Fame is gonna induct our very own Mr. Underwood for all of his years of being a basketball coach and the great things he did at Caroline for the sports teams there. So I think that's great. And I've seen some of the names. I look forward to the ceremony. Some like Dr. Lowe are no longer with us, and you know, we wish them the best for all those that are gonna be here. And last, if anyone has been watching all of these sporting events on TV, in particular football, you'll notice a lot of players wearing pink gloves, pink mouthguards, pink whatever. And it's National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So we wanted to make sure that all folks were aware of that again. And I know that's usually related to women, but I wanted to make sure especially men, 'cause we don't really do anything about our health until it hurts. And usually when it hurts, it's too late. So as a cancer survivor myself, I wanted to make sure that everybody, when you have that first symptom, you get checked out, 'cause early detection helps you beat it. So that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And Mr. Black, I think it was Ms. Kelly who swore us in our first term. Yep. So I have nothing to add at this point as far as announcements go, except for reminders that 17th in Bowling Green is Music on the Green and the 18th is the Harvest Festival. So everybody put up prayers for good weather and come out and enjoy the festival. And then the next week, on the 25th, down in Frog Level, they're gonna have their big to-do with their festival. So mark your calendars for those. Mr. Black, Mr. Sealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was gonna do the same thing. Music on the green Friday night. They're actually, looks like, gonna close the road for the first time. And this will be the 35th Harvest Festival this Saturday, and the weather looks good. Just wanna put the word out and invite everybody to come and have a great time. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Frog Level Festival is the Saturday, the 24th, not 25th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If I'm correct, I think I stand corrected. Just wanna make sure. Saturday, 24th, I believe.
On the calendar, it's the March 25th, so it's the 24th and 25th.
The last day. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say to the citizens, thank you for another successful state fair. You know, it had rained the first few days, but the last few days were packed. I mean, it was, I went over with my grandkids. They had a great time. So once again, it was a great event for the county. I always sit around and talk to parents while children are riding. And I talked to some people from as far out as Roanoke and Lady from Virginia Beach. And I was just, then they were pretty, pretty amazed at the fair. So again, another great event in Caroline County and something we can hang our hat on. I wanna thank Mr. Darnell Howard. I had asked him to have a soccer clinic at the Low Massey Park in Dawn. And we had folks come from Bowling Green, Lady Smith, and Sparta, brought their children out as far as to have that clinic. So the park is being used and it's just amazing how many people are over there on a daily and weekly basis taking advantage of that park. And I wanna thank Mr. Sheeble for getting those nets up for us, soccer nets, and the kids are really enjoying that. Also, I had a constituent meeting, well, this is actually the fourth constituent meeting in the last two months with the folks in Dawn. And they're looking forward to discussing and continuing the revitalization of Low Massey Park. They are very energetic. I wanna thank Mr. Wilson. I wanna thank David. I wanna thank Mr. Sheeble for coming and attending, and Mr. Barlow talking about the internet. We had a really good meeting, and people are interested, and sometimes they're, they get a little energetic, I'll say. But I'd rather have 70 people there rather than two or three just going along with the program. It was really a good meeting, and I'm looking forward to continue to moving that project forward. Many of you may not know, but Deacon Fields, Pastor Fields' father was funeralized last Saturday. So we wanted to certainly extend our condolences to the Fields family. I went to the funeral. It was a very good ceremony. So I was very pleased. And Deacon Fields was a giant in the community. Unlike people like myself with a loud voice and a loud mouth, he was very soft-spoken, and he got many things done in the community his way. So it was a loss for our community, but certainly the things that he did were just insurmountable. And finally, I also met with the group from Caroline Pines, and they're still concerned about their water quality. And Mr. Sheeble was there, and he discussed some things that the utilities are doing to add some sand filters and hopefully we can get a better quality of water. But some of it is their infrastructure is so old that we can't replace that infrastructure. And we're driving water to an infrastructure that does not meet the standard, and so you're gonna have some issues. And the county is replacing those. There is a fund that the Caroline Pines residents pay into, but it's not nearly enough to take care of all the needs. I think Mr. Sheeble told me there's about $400,000 in that account. But we're talking up in millions and millions of dollars to replace those lines in Caroline Pine. So we still have some work to do, but we're going to get there and we're just gonna continue to moving forward. And again, thank you to all the citizens who came out and voiced their concerns. And finally, as we move forward, I'd like to see, as we talk about the park plan tonight, I'd like to see a long-term plan for our public work building, a public safety building. I think we need to talk about this and not let it sneak up on us, because as you see, the county continues to grow. I read Gary's report that we continue to grow. And we have to make sure that we're ready for what's coming and not be on the back end of it, but be on the front end of it. And there's so much to policing and fire and rescue now that we need in the county to make sure that we're prepared for the continued growth. So hopefully we can get a chance to have a good meeting with the sheriff and Chief Loftus and start to put a plan together on how we're going to address our issues in the future. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Yeah, I think we're sort of waiting for the space study to be finalized and come in, and then we'll start looking, 'cause there's needs in other departments also. So it's, like you said, long-term planning is what we're looking at. But yes, as soon as that information comes in, I think that'd be a project that we're gonna have to look toward, start having meetings on. All right, so that takes us past our opening comments. And are there any amendments to the agenda at this time? Any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Presentations, and I get to do this rather long presentation for domestic awareness month. And do we have anybody from Empower House here? Mr. Colley?
In the back.
In the back? Would you like to come on forward? Good afternoon or good evening, I'm not sure with the weather out there today. But thank you all for being here. And what I'd like to do is to read this resolution and then have those of you within Empower House come up on the stage. There's a little entrance there. We'll get a picture of everybody, so you can have that for you, and we can have one of you for us. So that being said, at this time, I'd like to read the following resolution. A resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Caroline County, Virginia. Whereas in 2024, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, nearly 68,600 domestic violence hotline calls were answered. 27,700 adults and children of domestic violence received advocacy services, and 5,549 adults and children received shelter services, accumulating in 232,601 nights of shelter provided. And whereas thus far in 2025, between January 1 and June 30 of 2025, domestic violence hotline calls have already totaled 37,579. One in five survivors experienced a loss of income or financial security. One in five survivors had to relocate. Four of every 20 survivors stated the obstruction of their breathing. One in 10 survivors were threatened with firearms, and 137,788 advocacy hours were provided to support survivors. And whereas one in four women and one in seven men have been victims of severe physical violence, including beatings, burnings, strangulating by an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. And 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. Children exposed are more likely to attempt suicide, abuse drugs and alcohol, run away from home, engage in teenage prostitution, and commit sexual assault crimes. And whereas victims of intimate partner violence lost a total of eight million days of paid work each year. And whereas the cost of estimated partner violence exceeds 8.3 billion per year. And whereas racism, ovophobia, transphobia, agacism, and discrimination based on physical ability nationally and other factors help to perpetuate domestic violence and make finding safety even more difficult for more victims. And whereas the County of Caroline joins with others across Virginia and the nation supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increase public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in Caroline County. And whereas domestic violence impacts 10 million people each year, but it can be prevented. Preventing domestic violence requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, and transforms our communities. There, whereas during the month of October, in the County of Caroline, Empower House, Caroline County's Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Program Office, the Caroline Sheriff Office, victims-serving organizations, system partners, community organization, and allies come together to unify and support those working to end violence, support survivors, raise community awareness of the devastating effect of domestic violence, honor and support those who have survived, and mourn those that we have lost. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the County of Caroline, adopted this 14th day of October 2025. Signed by Charles M. Colley Jr. and Nancy L. Long, Chairman. So we want to thank you for all your work that you do. I can't imagine the things that you all have to deal with. And if there's anything you would like to say at this time to educate us or to make a statement to those who might be listening, the podium is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you so much to the Caroline County Board of Supervisors for recognizing this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As we know, domestic violence impacts one in four women and one in nine men in their lifetime. I would also like to thank the Caroline County Sheriff's Office, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and Victim Witness Program for all their work they do for this community to help survivors and hold offenders accountable. Empower House's services are free and confidential, and we are grateful for our community partners who help support this mission. Thank you again for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you for all you do. Sheriff, do you wanna come down? Is there anybody from the Attorney's Office here? Anybody else you wanna have in the picture, ladies? If not, you all come on up and let's catch a quick picture. Thank you. All right, next to our presentations is from the Caroline County Department of Social Services. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
How do you say your first name?
Tiana.
Tiana.
Yes.
And how long have you been with Social Services?
Altogether, about three years. I started in Stafford. I just got down here in Carolina in June.
Okay, I just, I'm on the board, so I recognize you, and so it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
And welcome to Caroline.
Thank you. I'm Sandra Wait.
All right, what do you have for us?
So I'm looking for sponsorship for our Thanksgiving program. Well, first, my name is Tiana Wilson. I'm a senior benefits worker here at Caroline DSS. This year... Let me go back. Okay, so I'm coming before you guys due to lack of funding this year for our Thanksgiving program in support of our elderly and disabled community. Due to lack of funds, the program is contingent. My idea was to do a basketball fundraiser to help raise money for Thanksgiving, which I did help. I held it this Saturday at the Parks and Rec Center, which was a really good turnout. I had six teams, three games, a good crowd, good community. Last year, we were able to assist 70 to 120 families, giving them $50 gift cards. This year, my goal is to provide per individual $50 gift cards. So my goal is to try to raise $7,500. If we are able to secure that amount, we should at least be able to accept 150 applicants. Also, prior to the fundraiser on Saturday, we had about $700 in our Thanksgiving pot. As of the 9th, we collected, including what I had so far for the basketball fundraiser, $2,322. This was my flyer for the basketball fundraiser this past weekend. So far alone, as even after Saturday, I have raised a total of $1,434 just from the basketball fundraiser alone. I am actually coming before the board, asking for help to help us meet our goal. I'm asking if we could get a donation up to $4,000 to help assist. I think that this program is really good. Sometimes the elderly and disabled are forgotten, which they shouldn't be, and they are deserving of Thanksgiving, especially 'cause they don't receive like the holiday assistance from us. So if we could give a $50 gift card per person, that would be really helpful, along with other outside resources. I'm also gonna continue to reach out to local churches and businesses within the community to seek donations up until the end of the month. We have put out our applications the 1st of October. So again, right now it's contingent due to the funding, but I am coming to you guys, looking for help. If you can help us reach our goal, I would greatly appreciate it. I do wanna take time to thank everyone for your time today, and thank you in advance for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I ask my questions, does anybody else have any or you want me to start, gentlemen? Mr. Underwood?
Ms. Wilson, how are you?
I'm doing good. How are you?
Long time no see.
Long, good to see you.
Good seeing you. My question is, last year, this program was funded how?
Last year, it was a budget line that no longer exists, along with donations from the community. So last year, we used about $2,900 in assisting 70 to 120 families, I believe. But they said they had $50 gift cards.
Right. Have you sent sponsorships out yet?
Yes.
But yeah, how much response have you got?
Not so much so. Even right now, we're at just a little over $2,300, even with sending out sponsor letters, flyers, word of mouth to the community. So we're still kind of low on funds.
Why is it no longer a line item? Is that, was that budgeting or...?
What we had was a line item that was related to COVID through Adult Protective Services funding. And it was deemed that we would be able to use this because it is food assistance. But that's...
That's, yeah, that's used up as November, or last October.
Wendy, I'm sorry, could you, I thought there was that some community ladies, I think Mrs. Sealy and Tyree maybe, used to send out letters to churches and different organizations and groups and collect funds. And I think they've, I know, I know our Ann's retired. So has that been picked up or has that been tried yet?
We have utilized some address lists that were shared with us. We did send out sponsorship letters. It's been, we started in August sending out letters. And as with last year, we just haven't received the same in donations as we did in past years.
Well, I do wanna say I do commend you for thinking out of the box with the basketball thing. That sort of kills two birds with one stone. You get the kids active and give them something to do, as well as raising some funds. I'm a little concerned about the idea of a gift per person instead of basing whatever funds you have on the actual size of the family, 'cause children don't eat much, you know? I was lucky if I could get my kids to sit still for 10 minutes at a Thanksgiving, long Thanksgiving dinner. So I'm a little hesitant about that, but I do applaud the... So I'm a little hesitant about that, but I do applaud the thinking out of the box. And I personally, I think I would rather keep a little bit of track on how you are doing with fundraising and try to continue to reach out to our community. I think it's really important for communities to, to step up. And I think we have some wonderful organizations and churches that would gladly, you know, spread the word and, and try to get the donations there. But if they wanted to send a donation, where would they send it? And who would they make it out to? So we can get that on the air. And I just, I think it's good for kids to see their families reaching out to help other families, especially at Thanksgiving. So I really don't want to lose that. And I'm glad to hear you were doing the letters, but maybe we need to expand on that a little bit more. But those are just, just my feelings. And it may take a little bit of everything to reach the gold. So any other comments, questions, Mr. Thomas?
Ladies, this, this was not part of your normal budget. You said in the beginning or last year, it's part of COVID funds that were in the budget?
That was just some additional funds that we had that we had used. We had a variety of ways that we were able to use those funds that were based on COVID. And then we found that we were able to utilize it for this particular deficit that we had. We utilized all the donations that we had first.
Now, how many years has this program been, been active? Seems like a long time, I thought.
It was active when I came back here and was appointed director. So that's been almost eleven years now. So it was, it was there long before that as well. Our department has done some kind of holiday assistance for many years before that.
Right, and, and before COVID, which was five years ago, it was funded in your regular budget or?
No, it was always based on donations.
Always donations.
Yes. What we had previously, particularly, I think, before the pandemic, we found that people, more people and organizations were sponsoring individuals, our families, for these holidays. And as we made our way through the pandemic, it became easier and simpler for people to make monetary donations. And we provided those gift cards to the elderly or disabled households for their Thanksgiving. We do get a few people or organizations that like to sponsor, and we have, we have that out in our flyers that we put out in the community when we're asking for sponsorships, that it's not just, you don't just have to do the money handout, be happy to sponsor a family directly.
But if, but if this were, were a regular program, like TANF or SNAP or, you know, one of those, it would have been in your budget?
Oh, sure, sure. The difference here, it's a non-mandated program. There are some, there are some social services that stopped doing holiday assistance programs. They just said, okay, community, you'll have to pick this up. So we, we're trying to do it in partnership with everyone that we know and try to continue the help that we can.
How much is your total budget for Social Services? About parkage?
Three million, seven hundred dollars?
And, and you want four thousand for this project?
We want to see how much we need first. I think that's important to say, and I appreciate Ms. Long's comments, that we should see how we do. We wanted to get the information out there. Tiana has worked very hard to bring attention to this need. She did a tremendous job doing this basketball fundraiser. It was really helpful. Just want to keep getting the word out there that we do still have a need to fulfill this program. As of today, we have a little over twenty-four hundred dollars. So I'm just updating what she had from last week. So it continues to trickle in.
So you really want us to, to kind of just backfill what you don't get?
And it will also be dependent on how many applicants we have, how many households are approved. Started the applications on October first, and we conclude taking applications at the end of October. And as of today, well, I'll say as of this morning, let me correct that. We had approved twenty-three households. So this is the fourteenth of October. Now, that number could change very dramatically. I expect it will at least double, if not triple.
I, for one, would like to help. I, I think seeing how much we need would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
Ms. Wilson, next time you should have had the board of supervisors play somebody else. I think people would have come to see us pass out.
Thank you.
This is Long. I'll just, if I could add to that, there's a lot of Rurting Clubs that are around the county. And I don't get the mail for our Rurting Clubber and Ladiesmith, but we do the polar bear plunge. And that's exactly why we do the polar bear plunges for things like this. So there is a meeting Thursday night. So if you guys are willing, I mean, it's up to the members. I can't, I can't guarantee that the members are going to vote for it. But that would be up to the membership. But this is, this is what we, this is kind of why we exist, giving out money to the community of people in need. So there is a meeting Thursday night on Charlesburg Road at our Ladiesmith Rurting Club. So if you want to show up there, that would be a way of, and I know there's Sparta Rurting Club. There's multiple Rurting Clubs around the county. I haven't seen, I'm not saying it hasn't happened. I haven't seen the mail, you know, I don't get the mail for the Rurting Club, but just be something to consider. You know, so Thursday night, a little time, a little FaceTime to, to, to explain to them what you do rather than a letter. Because a lot of times we get letters and, you know, we, we just don't know. And then when organizations come to us in person, it's, it's a lot easier to kind of understand and ask questions of them, and then we vote on it. So that might be something to consider for Thursday night.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Before you go, if someone is, is listening or watches Zoom tomorrow, who would they make a check out to or who would they contact?
Caroline County DSS Thanksgiving program in the memo. They can contact myself, Wendy, or Olivia if they had any further questions. But the check will be made out to Caroline DSS.
And we can take that at P O Box four three zero Bowling Green, two two four two seven, or in person.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I, I hope that we, we reached the goal. I've always thought Caroline was a very giving and community-based county, and we want to keep it that way. And that, you know, COVID sort of threw us all off balance a little bit. We've got to get back into the swing, people, and start doing our share. And I just, I think it's going to happen. And if not, then you let us know and we will consider backfilling. But Christmas and Thanksgiving needs to come from the heart if we're going to build a strong community. So we'll get, try to get the word out to the churches and some of the other groups in the area.
If I can just add, our Christmas fund is in really good shape. We've gotten so much wonderful sponsorship and donations from the community. It's just been continuous. So we really appreciate that. We're going to be able to help a lot of kids have a nice Christmas. And we're just trying to fill in with our Thanksgiving program because that's where we're really lacking.
Way to go, Caroline. I'm glad to hear about the Christmas. That makes me smile. So we just have to concentrate on getting the bellies full for, for those who, who need the help and, and enjoying the holidays and moving forward. So thank you. Keep us informed, please.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Transportation Committee. Who is doing Transportation Committee?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members.
Good evening.
I'm J D Young, with the Rita Church Planning Commission Representative, and the Chair of the Caroline County Transportation Committee. And also here tonight with me is Kyle Bates with VDOT and Mr. Leon Hughes. So tonight, on behalf of the Caroline County Transportation Committee, I want to give you a short report on the activities, accomplishments, and upcoming opportunities and challenges. The activities. Transportation Committee held its first meeting on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three with representation from all voting districts. And two board, board supervisors' representatives were present. Since the first meeting, the committee has reviewed and provided recommendations on the Ladiesmith Bike and Pedestrian Plan, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. We've reviewed and provided comments on the Round Six Smart Scale applications, discussed funding opportunities for safety and network enhancements on Route seventeen and Route two oh seven. We've discussed and made recommendations to staff regarding applications for state funds for both Smart Scale and TAP applications. Our accomplishments. The committee actively participated in reviewing and offering suggestions on the applications that were submitted for Round Six of Smart Scale. And we were happy to include in this report that, which is known by many, that Caroline County submitted four applications for consideration that totaled more than forty-six point three million dollars in possible funding. And of that forty-six point three million dollars, Caroline was awarded two of the projects totaling about fifteen million dollars plus for two of the four applications submitted. The Fredericksburg District submitted thirty-five projects, which included project submissions from Stafford, Spotsylvania, Matthews, Gloucester, Middlesex, King William, Essex, Westmoreland, Lancaster, and King, and George Washington Regional Commission. The awarded projects are intersection improvements on Route One at the intersection of Page and Marie Roads, a seven million eighty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollar project, and a turn lane improvements at the entrance of Lake Caroline. And that's a nine million forty-three thousand one hundred and ten dollar project. The Route One, Route One and Page and Marie project was the highest-scoring project in the Commonwealth. And these projects did not include any leverage funding from Caroline County. The committee collaborated with VDOT on prioritization of projects for the secondary six-year plan that allowed the left, I'm sorry, that allowed the right turn lane at Devil's Three Jump to be completed last summer. We also consider it as an accomplishment that the committee reviewed and considered the possible submission of the, of the application for TAP funding that comprised a portion of the project that was submitted for Smart Scale consideration. Although the committee concluded that the project was cost prohibitive and recommended that the staff not pursue the application. We count this as an accomplishment because we executed an evaluation process that asked the VDOT to consider alternatives that provided committee, that provided the committee with options and better understanding of the process that will be beneficial when considering future funding opportunities. The committee will continue to work with VDOT and the, and county staff on identifying, prioritizing, and investigating funding opportunities to execute improvements to the transportation network in all of Caroline County. Our challenges. The committee is in its infancy and will continue to evolve and, and improve. There are some challenges that include identifying funding options for the future projects that will require a financial commitment from the county because they do not meet the criteria to be eligible for Smart Scale funding. The attendance, the attendance of the appointed members has not been ideal. There are several members that have been diligent in attending meetings and others that have not, that have had limited to no attendance. We are happy to share the attendance numbers with you if you would like to see that. We're asking the board to consider appointing new members if the appointed member has not shown a commitment to attend. The committee recognizes that it is important for, for the members to be, be representative of the diverse perspective and geographic areas of the county. At the inception of the committee, members were to be appointed annually. So now is a great opportunity to consider reappointments and appointing new members. Opportunities. Believe it or not, it is the first, it is time for Smart Scale Round Seven, which officially begins March of twenty twenty-six. However, staff, VDOT, and the committee are already working on potential applications. This round of Smart Scale will be different as VDOT has informed localities that because of limiting staff assistance, will be limited to projects that are the result of a study or are on corridors that are identified as Vtrans Priority One or Two corridors. Fortunately for Caroline, we, we meet both criterias. VDOT is currently conducting a STARZ study on the route, on the exit of Exit one ten exchange. And the committee reviewed the Consultants Preliminary Alternatives Report on October the third. It is expected that this study will identify several potential Smart Scale projects for Round Seven. The area of, of the county that is identified as Vtrans Priority Two area is Route two oh seven corridor near the intersection of Ruth Glenn Road and Commo Church Loop. Here with us, as I mentioned, we have Mr. Bates and Mr. Hughes and myself. For any questions that you have. But before we get to questions, I would ask the board to consider authorizing Mr. Cully to write a letter on behalf of the board and the county for consideration of the Smart Scale, of the Smart Scale Seven project. Any questions for me? Mr. Hughes is going to explain the Smart Scales project.
So in the last round of Smart Scale, the, the project that you see on the screen, which is at Route One and Rogers Clark Boulevard, was submitted and reviewed and scored really well. And if it hadn't have been for another project in the region that consumed like fifty-seven million dollars, this project probably would have been awarded also. In this round, we want to resubmit this project with some changes that should require, should help it score even better because there's some reduction in the infrastructure. And so what will change in the upcoming application is this portion of sidewalk on the south side of Rogers Clark Boulevard will not be a part of the project. And the pedestrian accommodations will be at the intersection of Welcome Way and then extend south down to Route One and then here at the intersection of Route One and Jericho and Route two oh seven. The absence or the removal of this segment of the project should certainly reduce the cost. And the other interesting thing about this case is this project is we have a rezoning application that has been filed that involves this property here and this property here. And we're hopeful that the applicant in that case will be willing to assist in us making this project come into fruition through hopefully the right, dedication of some right of way or, and even maybe the possibility of construction, some of that improvement. In this last round, right of way would have had to be acquired on this property, this property, and this property. Well, when it comes back in this next round, hopefully we will have the commitment for right of way here and here, which will certainly reduce the cost as well as the cost reduction that we'll see with removal of this section, segment of the sidewalk. And so we feel like with the, from a cost perspective, the scoring should improve, and this project would hopefully be in the top, you know, two or three. Like I said, it was the fifth-rated project in the district last year. And so at this level, where we had to acquire right of way and we're going to take it back with some reduction and hopefully reduction in costs, we should see its score go up based on the formula that OIP uses to score Smart Scale projects. So we just wanted to point that out. And VDOT is asking that jurisdictions submit letters of support for projects early because in the last round, they had several jurisdictions that they went through the process of preparing estimates and doing the engineering work. And then when it came time for the applications to be filed, they didn't get filed because they didn't have support from those governing bodies. And so they had spent all this time and manpower for no reason. And so they're trying to avoid that. And so they're trying to avoid that in this round. So we just wanted to point that out and just kind of get ahead of the game.
Could I ask you a question or two, or could you just tell I wanted to ask a question? Under improvement for turn lane installation, it says you're going to make a right turn lane westbound on Rogers and Clark Boulevard? Is it Rogers and Clark Boulevard going east and west basically? I don't know where that turn lane would be.
So the turn lane is right here.
Oh, west going north? Okay, okay, that's, that's just what confused me. And the other thing is, there have been several studies about the impact of pedestrians on this particular part of two oh seven. Ninety five on this picture is further to the right and off the screen.
Correct.
But more or less, there's not a lot of pedestrian. Access or reason to be there. But more the pedestrian access or need is further down between ninety five and where the visitor center is. Why are you here and not there?
Well, we will be there and we're here right now because this project came out of the Route one corridor study. And so.
From VDOT?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the first reason. And there is considerable amount of pedestrian traffic along this section of the corridor. We have a laundromat here, a restaurant here, and then another retail shop here. And now there's a retail facility here. And so, and we have a application for rezoning or proper amendment that is going to put a significant number of office workers in this area. And so this is the first part of making those pedestrian accommodations along the corridor. So one of the things that we've been talking about with VDOT and amongst the committee is looking at this and it's the whole piece. From a global perspective and continuing to go north on two oh seven. And that may include hopefully a study of the interchange. And then also the Vtrans priority two area is down at Carmel Church Loop and two oh seven. And so hopefully, you know, some study there that will identify additional improvements that will be needed to address not only the traffic concerns. That we see out into the future, but also the pedestrian needs that are in that area. Because there are a significant, a significant number of pedestrians, like you said, between Carmel Church Loop and say Belmont.
Well, I'd say the other way. Belmont, most of it is car traffic. And I understand that Mr. Bates is here in the VDOT's Route one corridor study. But I would believe that the county would think. The other side of two oh seven is more important than this side of two oh seven. And that's, you know, I can think to two folks that represent that area think that way, I know for sure. So why is this first and not the other side first and?
Because like I said, this was in the study. So there's a study done, the engineering.
A VDOT study?
Yes.
Not a county study. Not a study by the people that were there, a study by VDOT who's looking at that particular road. What's the motto for VDOT, keep it moving? They want to keep traffic moving on Route one. We are looking at keeping people safe on two oh seven. They're not, they're not at issue right there. They are at issue if you go down and see people running across from McDonald's to the hotels, running across to Golden Corral. I see truck drivers stopped on the side of the road, running across the street. They're not stopping on the side of the road, running across the street over here.
Well, I would say this, we do have a fair amount of pedestrian traffic going from these two hotels over to here. We have a lot of pedestrian traffic going from the Flying J down to here. And we recently had.
But you got a sidewalk over there. So if they're going from Flying J down there, there's a sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk there.
You just said there was a sidewalk.
I know. There's no, right now, there's no sidewalk out here at all.
Okay, okay, so they're walking there.
So they're walking here. And like I said, right now, we have the study that's in place to allow this project to move forward. For us to go to the next section that you guys are talking about, we have to do a study. And so that there's support for it in the application process. The application process requires a significant level of technical work to be filed. And so as this was done as a part of the study, the consultants did all the technical work behind. The project so that it could be submitted. And so like I said, we're looking at this globally and our next priority is to look at sections that you guys are interested in. We recognize there's a need when Carrie was here with GWRC, she pointed out the intersection of Carmel Church Loop. And two oh seven as an issue. And so in order to do that, it will require, we can essentially do this with no county funding. In order to prepare the studies that you guys want us to do as the county, it's going to require significant county funding. So this is an opportunity for us to get a portion of this done.
It's.
Without any funds.
But you have to, you have to look at our perspective. And our perspective is, even though there's no, oh my goodness, this is going to affect my road repaving projects later on or?
Not at all.
Oh, I didn't think so. The reality is, VDOT who did a study is concerned about their road and making sure traffic goes up and down Route one fast. I appreciate that. I respect Mr. Bates's opinion and ideas and the people down in Richmond and Central Office. That is not as important to me as making sure the people on the other side are safe. I've had people get hurt on the other side. I don't know anybody who's gotten hurt going to the Mexican restaurant, Mejolisco, I'm giving them a free ad, they're a great place. But I don't know anybody who's been hurt going there. I know people who've been hurt on the other side. So the fact that we're talking now, no county funds is a great benefit to me. I appreciate that. But you can repave our parking lot with no county funds, that doesn't make any effort, any difference to me. You need to do what helps the county. I know, I know Kyle was sitting there and Kyle was a good friend for a long time. He wants to keep traffic moving on Route one.
I want to keep traffic moving on two oh seven.
I don't want it moving on two oh seven, I want it safe on two oh seven, that's what I'm saying.
Look, so let me, let's back up for just a quick second, bear with me here. So in twenty twenty two, we had zero smart scale applications from Caroline County.
That wasn't your fault, that was our fault.
No, no, no. When I came back, that was one of the things when Leon got up here and this transportation committee and conversations with you all. It was what can we do as a county in Caroline to have a submission that will hopefully be successful? So we identified and had the public hearing, we had the support from you all for this Route one corridor study. And that allowed, you know, to JD's, you know, point earlier, that allowed four applications and two successful projects that were a hundred percent county funded. The only reason Route one corridor was selected because of the Vtrans need. And if you're just talking in a bubble, looking at smart scale, that gives you the best opportunity for success through that competitive program to get that, that state funding. There is nothing to say that even VDOT can't participate. Leon's point was right, you know, if you all want to, you know, move forward with the study, but there's nothing to say that VDOT can't partake in that as well. We want to do that same thing. Everything you said was spot on, we agree with it. Like from a VDOT perspective, the official response is we would love to do all those same things. We have to have the same conversation that we did on Route one. We have to look at, you know, targeted improvements. And I would like to see a study done on two oh seven the exact same way that we did on Route one. So that we can look at potential alternatives for intersection improvements with truck traffic and, and different navigation points that they're trying to get to and from. I think there's some smart opportunity for wayfinding, there's obviously, you can't just put a pedestrian accommodation in the middle of nowhere, right? You have to have that logical termini. I think this is the start to a perfectly great network that will eventually feed into what I believe Mr. Hughes is saying is going to be a bigger picture. So I think this is a phenomenal place to start, but that's all it is and you got to start somewhere. I would like to see additional improvements.
But again, Kyle, you're telling us, you're telling us to start at a place where we have not identified as the problem. We are just saying, and again, back to you, everything you said was spot on. We are just saying, start where the problem is. Mr. Hughes has said there's an application for there and he expects a lot of, he doesn't know if that application is going to get approved. That application may get turned down. And then we've done all of this for a pie in the sky project. It's, it's, which is more important?
Nobody's going to use, no.
Go ahead.
There's not very much, there's not very much foot traffic.
I think there was a pedestrian fatality on Route one right in this section within the last couple of years.
On two oh seven?
On Route one.
On Route one?
Yeah, but that's, this is two oh seven here.
Understood.
And the intersection of Route one, which I don't see very many people walking from Flying J back to.
Yeah, back to the Mexican restaurant.
Store.
Right.
Or the, or the, it's not, Leon, I go there every day. Every, I mean, every day. My post office right across the street, there's not people walking.
No.
People aren't walking down that stretch, down the southern end of, of two oh seven. To go to the little Mexican restaurant and definitely not to the laundromat.
Right.
Mr. White, I don't want to, I don't want to argue with you, but if you.
We're not arguing, we're debating.
No, no.
We are presenting, we are presenting what are facts.
Debating.
And we are presenting what is, what is a perspective that has not been considered and should have been considered because what's the priority? You're not fixing a problem that we've identified.
Your perspective has been considered and that's why we are not looking at this in a bubble. We have an opportunity, the work has been done that will allow this to be the first leg of the puzzle. The reason that it can't all get done at one time, there's no infinite amount.
We're not asking for it to be done at one time.
But we're not prepared, the county is not prepared to do the area that you want to do. That's the point that I'm making. The county is not prepared to do the improvements, these improvements at the area you were talking about.
So you just want us to fix an area that we don't think is a problem because VDOT says that's what they want to fix?
No, you have to start somewhere and this is a start.
Well, why start, why start where there's not a problem?
Well, Mr..
I'm Thomas, he's Underwood.
There is, there is a problem. If you recall, the very first time we came to you all and did a presentation about transportation improvements in Caroline County. I showed you slides that had pedestrians in those slides. You may not recall that, but there were pedestrians in those slides. Identifying and kind of outlining the reason that we wanted to make improvements and that improvements were needed here. It just so happened that the study came along and included this intersection in this area. And they did all the work that allows us to move forward.
But the intersection, Mr. Hughes, and up two oh seven is different. If you're talking about improving the Jericho Road, two oh seven, Route one intersection. That's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
You're, you're going up two oh seven if there's an issue going up two oh seven. And that's not the issue. The issue is at the traffic light there at two oh seven.
And Carmel Church Loop.
But we're talking about this one right here first. This is, this is Route one and two oh.
Correct.
Two oh seven.
But like.
Carmel Church Loop is definitely a problem.
It is, but like Kyle said, you have to have a logical termini for.
There is no rest of.
For pedestrian accommodations.
Oh, the other, yeah.
So you make the improvements at the intersection and then you take the pedestrian accommodations west along two oh seven. And you address the issue of people, there are pedestrians crossing that street right now. Going from those hotels to those retail facilities on the south side. It happens.
Gentlemen, I'm going to ask in the interest of time that everybody could contact one another and y'all can discuss this on, on the side. So that we're not here until midnight if that's, that's all right. But I will point out that we did see slides with pedestrians. I will also remind the board that there is a commuter lot on the other side of that intersection. And this, this was presented to us before with more sidewalks. Cause I remember fussing about all the sidewalks because we didn't want to encourage people necessarily walking beside the highway. Especially on the side where the tractor trailers come up. And we discussed down by the community center and that loop. And how that needed a study also to complete the picture. And so I think we could have it all, but if you want to do it through smart scale, we can't get greedy and try to do it all at one time. So that's my comment. And I also, while I've got the mic, want to say to the transportation committee and to Mr. Young, thank you very much for all your work. The, the, the high marks on the improvements that we got from smart scale last year. Shows how much you all worked. And to your question on attendance, I certainly would like to know the attendance by representative in the Port Royal District.
A hundred percent.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
I think, I think this was only, this was from the smart scale, I think this was the only smart scale project.
Right.
Oh, we had two, this is the only one?
This is the only one. So the other, the other smart scale projects will come out of the study, the STARs study at Exit one ten. So VDOT, in your package, you received a preliminary report on the, some alternatives that they are investigating. Now I will say, please understand that on Thursday at about four o'clock. I was told that there will be some additional alternatives that the consultant is going to be looking at. So what you received in your packet, you know, you had already gotten it when we got this information that they were looking at some additional alternatives. So the consultant is going to go back and come back again with some additional alternatives of what you have received in your packet, so.
So Mr. Hughes, what do you need from us tonight?
The only I need from you all is authorize Mr. Cully to write a letter saying that the county is going to file this application in the next round of smart scale.
Do we have anything else ready to go in the next application of smart scale?
No, if we don't file this application and if nothing comes out of the.
STARs study.
STARs study, then we won't have any applications. And this application, like I said, scored extremely well and probably would have been funded not for a fifty seven million dollar project out of our neighbors to the north. I'm sorry? Yes. You may have, I mean, it's at the intersection of, yeah, South Point Parkway and ninety five, yeah.
And, you know, there are some people who didn't understand the importance of Page Road. Those of us who have been here for a while know how many accidents have been there. And, and that still has to be built, but it's not costing us anything. We can get free money. That is not the best intersection in the world, especially like when the fair's going on, it does back up and we're getting more and more traffic. I don't see what we really have to lose by moving forward with the smart scale application. And, you know, we either get it or we don't, but there, we won't lose anything if we don't get it. Cause if you don't ask, you don't know. So my motion would be that we move forward with the application for the smart scale as presented tonight. Do I have a second?
Right, Mr. Sealy, it's our district.
It's your district.
Thank you.
I mean.
Just one, the top part is mine, the bottom part is Mr. Underwood's. And we're saying what, what the priority should be. Just because we get money from the state to do this, is this the most effective use of our money or time? That's, that's the question. And I appreciate Mrs. Long trying to cut off debate, but I don't think we were finished.
Well, I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, so, I mean, when does this have to go in?
It doesn't have to.
No, when, when does it?
So the pre-application process starts on March twenty, I mean, March first. And so VDOT would like the commitment that if they're going to expend the time to do the work necessary to prepare the application. That they want to be assured that we're going to follow through with the application.
So we have another meeting, we could actually.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like this is due next Monday.
It's not going to do.
Exactly.
Okay.
So perhaps, perhaps let me give you time to go up and meet with.
I can say this.
Mr. Bates and all of us will have a discussion, I'm sure, before then.
Certainly, but I will tell you this, we are not going to be able, unless you guys want to fork out the money. Be able to do a project in smart scale at that intersection you want to do in, in that amount of time. Because you're going to have to hire a consultant, you're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. And you probably won't get there in time for that application to be ready for this round seven of smart scale. So this is a ready application, it's a, it's one piece of the puzzle. And so I appreciate. And so, I, I appreciate the, the concern about priorities, but if we don't start, we don't start. And we don't wanna be behind the eight ball. I mean, this is an opportunity to get out ahead of the issues that are out there. And so. You all's concerns are not falling on deaf ears, we are working and that is the next priority. This corridor is second behind the one-ten interchange in that corridor in terms of priority. For Carolina County. And I've never been in a jurisdiction that has ever complained about road improvements until they have to be done after the fact. And so we're trying to be proactive and keep from being behind the eight ball. And so. You know, this, the work is done, the project scored well in the last round. You know, it, it is the beginning to help show VDOT that one, we're serious about our projects and we're serious about improving the corridor. Because if we do this, the study for the one oh four interchange happens, and then the study for the loop. And up to Enterprise Drive happens, and so it's a process, and so.
Mr. Underwood.
Um, Madam Chair, um, you had a motion on the floor and didn't get a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
With, with reluctance, and the, and the reason. I'm going to say that is because. It is moving forward. It's not costing the taxpayers. The fund, it's not ideal. Because if I were a taxpayer to the state. And I see roads and bridges with bad abatements and. You got an inch between the bridge and the concrete and you, you run over and you're busting tires and. We're putting a sidewalk on two oh seven. It just doesn't look like we're the smartest guy in the room. It, it is, it, you can say it's progress. And I can say, yes, it is progress. But unfortunately, it's not progress in the areas that we feel is the most important. And the safe, and would create a safety issue or resolve a safety issue. At. Uh, Carmel Church Loop, where you're building the sheets there now and you're gonna have more traffic. So, that's what concerns me. I, I do wanna take the state's money and, and use it to the benefit of the county. But I'm just, I was just hoping that we would, since there is no other project. Like I said, I'll second the motion and I'll support it, but you know, I have some, um, I have some reluctance. Let's, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Black.
Yeah, just, um, really quickly, I appreciate everything I, I've seen, cuz we get the updates at GWRC meetings and there have been years and we are. Not done anything, and it's our fault, and there have been years when we've done stuff and we haven't gotten anything. So any money that we can get from the state to help pay for a project, um, I say we go forward with it. Um, one thing I would like to see, and I know it's in the packet there, is I'd like to, to sit down and have a discussion about exactly to kind of inform us and sit down about the ladies, what, what's planned for Ladysmith. Cuz that interchange is gonna be really big because the reality behind us are subdivisions. The fastest growing subdivisions are in the Ladysmith area, whether it be, you know, Pendleton is the big one, but the other subdivisions are also growing and Ladysmith Village could, you know, you have Bridlewood growing. So that, that intersection is gonna become really, really important to us, that interchange and the intersection, so. I would like to see us sometime sit down and have a discussion about what is planned.
So watch your email for a doodle poll on your available meeting dates.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Um, all, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So moved. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Alright, Davenport is next. Hello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good to see you all again. Get a presentation pulled up here. My senior colleague Courtney is traveling tonight, so I'm here on his behalf.
Well, we hope he's traveling someplace fun and not for work.
I don't know. We'll start sending it over in PowerPoint, so it's easier to pull up for you, now PDF can cause issues sometimes.
Not as much as the colors. You guys are killing us.
Those, those decisions are above my pay grade. There we go, thank you. Um, so I'm here tonight to talk through the results of the RFP process for the financing for the county's FY twenty-six, uh, debt-funded capital needs. So as you can see on the table there in the middle of page one, the, the assets being financed this fiscal year are, are all equipment related. So what that means is we can do an equipment lease wherein the equipment that we're financing serves as collateral. And so as you can see, there's a, a variety of amortization or term lengths ranging from five to ten years. And so we, what we asked the banks for, we gave them two options, and so we said, uh, we asked for the, a rate for each tranche of the useful lives under option A. And then we also asked for one interest rate, one blended rate for all of the tranches. And what we saw was very good participation from the banks, we actually received nine proposals. And so Atlantic Union, who's the county's bank of record, actually submitted the top proposal. Uh, with Bank of America coming in as, as a close second, and I'll, I'll give you a sense for, for what that means here in a second. Uh, but with, with Atlantic Union's rates, uh, or proposal, not only did they provide the lowest rates, but their prepayment flexibility, we, we have complete flexibility. So there's no, no fee, and we're able to prepay it in whole or at any time with no penalty. It's also fully credit approved. And so when we blend those three interest rates that you saw from Atlantic Union, it results in a, a, a true interest cost of a three fifty-five. Uh, for comparative purposes, Bank of America was roughly a three sixty-two. Um, but the deciding factor from our perspective, uh, was the prepayment flexibility as well. In addition to the, the few basis points being lower, um, on Bank of America's bid. Uh, we didn't have, we, we didn't have the ability to prepay until halfway through the term. So with Atlantic Union, we have complete flexibility. And so in summary, as, as I've stated here, uh, Atl- Atlantic Union offers the lowest interest rate. They also offer the, the most flexible prepayment provisions, it's formally credit approved, and the interest rates are fixed through maturity, uh, and through closing. And so, uh, there's gonna be a, a resolution on the agenda this evening, um, later on in the meeting, uh, for you all to consider the Atlantic Union proposal. Uh, and should you all decide to move forward, we would, we would shoot to close by the end of the month. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
These are, these are all short-term borrowings, so it's not like we're doing a school construction which is twenty years.
Correct.
We wouldn't necessarily have the option to refinance these when the rates drop?
We would, we would.
Okay, we'd have to pay it off first and then refinance it?
Yeah, so you, what you would do is you, you would refinance it with, with another financing, but I, I remember when I first started, um, back during the COVID years, we did an equipment lease for like a one-twenty or one-thirty. Um, so just depending upon how much, um, principal is left outstanding at that time.
Okay.
We would, we would then decide, but we.
That option still exists.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's the point of the, the flexible prepayment provisions, we have that flexibility should the opportunity arise.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Underwood.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
We talked about our fund balance, and I'm just curious. Why we wouldn't consider paying some of these. Like vehicles. When we have the money to do so without hurting our credit rating.
Yeah, so, so I.
Looking, you know, looking forward.
Right.
With businesses that are coming.
Right.
I think we have other projects I'd like to see us.
Yeah, and so I think we look at the, the equipment type financing sort of as a separate basket versus the long-term stuff. I mean, we still take it account, into account with your, with your, um, debt ratios and so forth. Um, but based upon, based upon the county's, um, unassigned fund balance, which I believe was close to the policy, Charlie, and you, you can correct me on that if I'm wrong, but.
No, we're over the poli, no, 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 we're way over the policy.
But I, I think we had talked about increasing it to, to twenty-five percent. But that, that's something that we can, we can revisit down the road, but, uh.
Mr. Cully, what, what's our, what's our percent fund balance? Just off the top of your, I don't, I don't need it, exact dollar.
I don't know the percent, but we budgeted these things because we were talking about spending fund balance on other projects for schools. So we can't, we can't plan two or three different. Things out of, so these short-term borrowings for these, uh, uh, vehicles and things, we had anticipated financing in the budget, not paying. Not paying cash out of the fund balance, because we were planning on doing that for other things, so. And then we, we still don't know how we ended this year, we could have ended this year in the hole. Um, because we, we, uh, bounced the budget off about three point nine million out of the fund balance in the, in the, uh, budget ended June thirty. So I would, I would, uh. In that we had planned to do some other things, some school projects and other things out of the fund balance, I wouldn't.
But, but, but my concern, my, my concern is that. We're borrowing money. When we have money available to spend. And. I would say right now we're in very good shape financially. But, and we, we can't take. All of our funds and say, it's gonna go to schools or they have other departments, the sheriff's office to buy and rescue.
Correct, as I'm saying, there are other things that we wanna do with that fund bounce money, other than these short-term borrowings, so.
But that doesn't, but that won't hurt our, our standing.
No, no.
Correct, so you.
When you get down to policy, I think you would, remember, the only s- standard that we meet that's good is our cash reserves for the bond ratings. All the rest of them, we're below where we should be for our rating. So that's why we have to keep a strong fund balance, not one at policy.
Right, I understand, but, but last time Davenport were, was here. I think, if, if I'm recalling, the suggestion was that we spend some funds out of the, one-time monies out of the fund balance.
Well, we talked about doing some architectural fees. Out of the fund balance, and we talked about actually doing one addition out of the fund balance, so. It, I mean, we have to be careful, I, I see what you're saying, cuz our tendency would be, let's. You know, the same vote would be, would be spend the ca, why finance if you can, if you can pay for it?
If it doesn't hurt us.
But if we're gonna do some of these other things.
The fund balance was twenty-seven point three.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven point three million was the fund balance.
And we talked about moving the fund balance to twenty-five percent of.
It's. What percentages of that, of our total budget? Seventy?
I thought we talked about twenty percent, not twenty-five.
It was twenty now.
I think we did talk, because of where we are with our grow, here, here's our other problem, is our budget's growing. And twenty-five percent of our budget every year gets bigger.
That's right.
So if we don't, if we don't. Continue with that vision of we've got some capital projects we wanna do. That we all agree to, we wanna do some design work on some things that we're gonna pay cash for. I mean, this is, this is, to me, I mean, when you look at the rate for these kinds of. For these kinds of projects, they're really, really reasonable. And they're not, they're things we're gonna have to do, cuz we've learned pay now or pay later with the sheriff's vehicles. Fixing them costs us more than, than, than the financing almost, I mean, more than the financing costs, so. I, I'm on board with you, Mr. Underwood, I like paying cash, but I do know there are some projects that we've got coming that we're gonna, we're gonna pay cash for so that. We can do those without any borrowing, because we still have a borrowing at bay, do we not, like ten million dollars?
That's right, that interim financing that would, that went through last year.
And so that's.
That was the HVAC system.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, so.
Ten million for school.
So rather than play with that, that, tho- those dollars, I, I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of, I mean, three percent. And they're vehicles, I mean, buying a vehicle and. The problem with our vehicles is the sheriff has told me is that we can't buy the cars we were buying, we're now at SUVs.
More cars.
Cuz the cars aren't even manufactured anymore, which is, I mean, so the cost of that's going up, so there's nothing easy or cheap about any of this.
The real question is, what's the impact of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? On our budget, on our, our unencumbered balance versus paying the whole thing? So.
It just depends what else we wanna do with the unencumbered balance, which is what we've got coming to us.
We know we wanna spend five or six million dollars on some things right away.
Right, so.
We get a chance to do it, that's what we're gonna do.
That's what we're gonna do, so I, I'm in, I, I mean, I'm in fit, and I'll even make the motion that we adopt the financing as presented.
Second.
For, for the, for the vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I guess not.
I'm sorry, I just. We're in violent agreement, at some point you gotta just move on.
I was good, I was good beforehand.
And Mr. Underwood, I, I do wanna make one more point, so your fund balance that's sitting in the bank is earning in excess of four percent right now. And so if you hold on to that, you're earning more than you're paying.
See, why didn't you say that when you first started? I mean, it was so much easier.
I told you we were in violent agreement.
We're borrowing, we're borrowing at three point, what is it, five?
Three, three five, and you can invest in L G B T.
And we're earning four percent.
That's right. My, my initial thought is to go to the credit rating and to think about the unassigned fund balance, but that's one of the reasons why we protect it.
So as long as I keep that three million in the bank, I'm paying for it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna do appointments real quick?
Yeah, we may as. I, I do have a, a Board of Zoning Appeals at-large member, if everybody's interested.
I don't, Danny Carter.
You wanna go to that, Nancy?
Alright, and then do, uh, public comment after that?
Yep.
We'll go to consent and then go to public comment.
Alright, we're gonna, alright. Alright, so we have an appointment for the at-large Board of Zoting Appeals, Mr. Sealy.
Yes, I, I, I've talked to a. Uh, an individual who's very interested, and I'd like to nominate Delonte Coleman.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Let's see, let's see, uh, also we need someone for the Economic Development Authority for Western Carolina, Mr. Black.
Yep, um, Mr. Danny Carter. I'd like to, um, reappoint Mr. Danny Carter to the.
Talking.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. We're moving right along. Healthy Generation Area Agents, Agency, Mr. Underwood.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to appoint Ms. Joyce, reappoint Ms. Joyce Johnson.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for Ms. Johnson to be reappointed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So.
I'm making a, I make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we are going to move forward with our public comment session. At this time, you have, uh, if you would like to come forward, you can give us your name and your voting district. And you have three minutes to speak, and we would love to hear what's on your mind. So if anyone has something they would like to say to the, to the board, please come forward at this time.
Hello, I'm Jay Fuller, I live up on Macedonia Road, uh, three houses down from, uh, Macedonia Baptist Church. I really love the neighborhood. But some people you could watch out for. Um, but I've been working with Scott Moser for about thirty years, and I had a good relationship. And I've been talking to you about picking up litter, cuz I was volunteering, picking up litter. I really enjoy. I really enjoy picking up litter, I'm not bragging about it. But a few years ago, I was able to pick up 10 bags a day. I couldn't get any volunteers in the neighborhood. The kid said, what do you do, work for Vida? No, I'm a volunteer, you might help me? Oh, no. This is grandpa here, he's trying to show you how to pick up litter to keep this county clean, you know?
Good for you.
Living as an example. Then I'm walking to Macedonia Church, and my Sunday School teacher, Tony Brown, says, you got anything the praise has brought Lord about? Yeah, I'm walking down Macedonia Road. I've never seen it so clean, you don't know how bad it used to be. I'm praising the Lord all the way to church. Tony Brown, he just came back after 30 years, a good Sunday School teacher. Said, what are you talking about? Didn't you know you were from here, you were left for 30 years? This used to be a real trash area. I mean, I'm really happy, so I got to keep up this good work. And I'm in Christianity through truck driving, trying to do it for like 14 years. I'm talking to Sarah and Emily Kip and North Presbyterian Church. My pastor, Pastor Jackson, I appreciate him because he's a Marine. He's been there for 18 years. I couldn't do it. I know the people, some people go there. I says, how do you do it? You're a Marine, how come you're not getting their heads together? And he's real patient and kind. And I couldn't imagine a man retired from the Marines being that way. Because a lot of Marines all the way out here are gunners. We shoot these people, shoot them people we want. Pastor Jackson's so humble, and I appreciate that, and I respect him. So I says, we need to spread Christianity through the world through truck driving. We got truck stops here. We can do this, but Caroline County is a world love county through love and peace. We can start by truck drivers, maybe take maybe food to worldwide embassies. Because I'm going to Trucking School. A lot of people from all over the world going to that Trucking School in Thornsburg. But it's not Christian. You can't promote it as love across the world, and people are just too out there. And they promote it as helping women and minorities that get off welfare. They need help. So what they need, pre-trip inspection. It's not that hard, just got to spend time with them. Because pre-trip, you're supposed to do a pre-trip inspection 15 minutes. And these women are failing the state test because they're not doing a pre-trip inspection. I'm just shocked.
Mr. Fuller, I'm sorry to rush you, but can you get to the, to the end of your statement within the next minute?
Yeah, I'm going to round it up now. So proposing we get a truck, start volunteering, pre-trip inspection, find the girls that failed it, teach them pre-trip inspection, take them back and take them to the state test.
So are you thinking about opening a trucking school or academy?
Just teach them, start out volunteering, teach them, then work into the academy. Then we can talk as we go. And we can work it out as we go. Like park a truck maybe anywhere, and say, you failed the pre-trip, come here, I'll help you. Then we got another guy, we can take you to the state test. You don't have to wait for the school because you went through all the requirements for the CDL. Then if you need any extra practice, we can help you with that. And we run a truck, maybe take you to the state and get you to graduate.
I would, I would suggest you meet with someone at planning to see what would be required for you to start such a event. But it's always good to think about new ways to reach out to people.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
You too.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and speak? Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman Long and members of the board. My name is Mary Hodge. I live in the Woodford area of Bowling Green District. I wasn't planning on, please excuse my dress because I wasn't planning on attending this meeting tonight, I had a busy day. But I was watching online and I saw the representative of Urban Grid here in our audience. And I'm quite upset because their application was denied in our county in 2022. They tried last year to coerce the board to bring the solar ordinance back. I was fortunate that I found that. Now, again, they're trying to cuddle up to the Board of Supervisors and try, try to find a way to bring the solar ordinance back. Well, that's not going to work. And there, I attended the Clean Energy Summit, I call it the prom, last week in Richmond. And I attended a seminar, and that's their modus operandi. They go to communities and they find the weak places in the communities where they need, where people might need money or donations. And they try to like make their, make like they're a good community member. But all they want to do is take advantage of us and, and steal our land and so they can make money. Now, please, I, I just urge you to, to never bring the solar ordinance back. I don't have a prepared statement back, and I'm very emotional right now. But I, I just know that if they give money to any of the donation, any of the organizations here, I hope that you realize that this will be a conflict of interest in the future. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elaine Green, and I'm from the Reedy Church District. And I, I had a question. On Saturday, I think someone mentioned to me that the new restrooms that were built in Low Massey Park, that they may not be ADA compliant. Normally, I don't go on second-hand information, I'd go check it out. But they mentioned it, and it was late. So I didn't go over to check, but I kept it in the back of my mind to mention it today to just bring it before you. And the second thing is the family who lives on 301 South, past the Don Convenience Store, who has the trucking company basically housed in front of their property. They're still complaining about safety issues. I don't see them here tonight, but just as I spoke up about this issue for that family a few months ago, I'm bringing it back to the attention because apparently there are unsafe crossings with the trucks stopping traffic. I'm not really sure what the family is doing about it, whether they're calling the police or have they raised it here? I don't know. But I'm interested because I live in, not far from that area. And, you know, and they're good members of the community and all, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Anyone else? Seeing no one else coming forward at this time, I will close public comment.
Madam Chair, can, can we ask Mr. Shebel about the ADA restrooms at Don? I'm sure he would know about those and.
I see Scott coming down too.
I believe, I believe the sheriff's going to talk about the trucks.
Good evening, what was the question, I'm sorry?
The, the restrooms that were just installed at Low Massey Park, they, they are ADA compliant.
Yes, they are.
Okay. Ms. Green, I know you're talking to the sheriff, but Mr. Shebel said they are ADA compliant. Okay, thank you.
Can we take a break here?
Yes.
How fast can we go through these other lines?
Number six is going to take a while, I'm sure.
At this time, I think the board is going to take a 10-minute break, gentlemen. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we will return. We'll take a ten-minute break and we will return. Thank you. At this time, we're going to call the Board Supervisors Meeting back to order. And that takes us to four?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the equipment leasing financing approval of the equipment leasing and purchase agreement.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Number five? Any... here comes Chief.
In short, we had an opportunity to apply for a grant through VDEM to get a generator for this building. At a cost share, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand on the state, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand here in Caroline. Mr. Cully approved that, so that we wouldn't miss the opportunity, but it does need to come to the board for ratification since it does have a local cost share. I can tell you, if you want more, I can elaborate or I can say less.
Remembering this is our emergency shelter.
It's the secondary.
This is not an emergency shelter here today. We use the middle schools are primary and the high school. We bought, we got a generator on the same grant a few years ago. The reason I'm interested in this building is it's county-controlled. If we have a small emergency in the county, I can't displace students at the middle school so I can shelter folks, fifty, a hundred people. This building would give us that opportunity. Secondary to this, it is the hub of government, right? You guys have your meetings there, the libraries here, social services. We don't have a generator on this building. It would allow continuity of government to continue in a disaster. But it would allow us to do cooling shelters, warming shelters, anything like that on a smaller scale than the closing of schools.
We've used this building before as a cooling shelter.
Yes, we have.
Several times.
We just don't have power, but it had power, yep.
We used it once many years ago as a warming center.
We have.
Yeah.
Yep. We just don't have emergency power if this lost power. Would also allow continuity of board meetings, right? Power goes out, you can still continue. We gotta have that.
That's not a benefit. Not a positive there, Chief.
Alright, so we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
This one comes from the unencumbered balance.
Right, unencumbered balance.
You would get a second shot at this. If we were awarded the grant, I'd come back and then you can appropriate the funds from wherever.
Alright, so this is just to apply?
Yes, ma'am, just to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for keeping that, keeping us up to date on things. Alright, at this time, we're gonna open the Board Supervisors for, together to discuss further improvements, possible improvements to county parks. I think it's county parks in general, or just, or the main?
The main park.
Opposed, in general?
The main park, I think that we're, yeah.
Well, I don't wanna lose sight that, you know, we've already committed to the Dawn Center. And, you know, we just haven't had the architectural services yet, but we're, at least I feel like we're committed, I'm committed to finishing that, so.
Are you saying that takes priority?
I just think we made that commitment, and I'd like to look, I mean, I don't mind looking forward, but I'd like to know, rather than, I mean, I know we're gonna talk about turf fields again, but I'd like to talk about where we're gonna put additional fields before we talk about turf, because our, our problem isn't that we haven't, is, our problem is we don't have enough fields and they're way overused. So where would we go? What would that look like, Mr. Sheeble, if we went across, across the road over next to the middle school? What would that look like? How many can we put there? What would it cost us to do all that? Because to me, before I personally do anything, I'd like to see additional fields because that would solve a lot of the problems we have with, and I see your picture and I know what this field is, so.
The, so originally, the thought was, hey, let's look at additional fields. When we met with Mr. Howard and staff and we talked more about the field in the playing, if we actually had the fields that were turf, it would drastically increase our playing time. Anytime it rains, we can't get on the fields. They're wet for days, we cancel more and more. If they had lights on them, they could play longer periods of time. So the playability and the time, you'll get so much more out of a smaller area than having additional fields. And the picture I just gave you, this is for the top size, the small kids playing soccer. This was set up in the outfield of the softball field. So this is two weeks of play. All this grass is beautiful green, just like it is behind it. This is two weeks, and that's just the small kids. And this is why we can't grow grass. It just, grass does not grow on a highway. So the more that we play on grass fields, and this is again, just the little kids. Now you throw the next size up and put middle school kids, high school kids, and then you get the teams that come in on the weekends and play, grass just doesn't grow.
Say that again, not teams, but people that use the park come in and play.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about just people that come to the park, because it's a public park.
Correct.
I just wanna be clear about what that is, so that everybody understands later on what point it'll be.
Can I ask a question before you go on, Mr. Sheeble, about this picture? What kind of grass is this?
This is Kentucky thirty-one.
So it's just regular tall fescue?
Correct.
That's not what you... Not Bermuda?
No, sir.
Not Zoysia?
So we looked at Bermuda grass. So Bermuda grass looks beautiful. They've got it over at the Carmel School, and that's what they use. But the Carmel School uses it during the growing season, and they don't use it during the winter at all. So the problem with Bermuda is we're in what's called a transitional zone. So we've got a problem with freezing. It'll actually have a kill-off.
It turns brown.
It turns brown. So you'll put, generally you'll come back and put rye on top of it during the winter to make it stay green and to help protect it. But if you're playing on it during the winter months, it's going to, it's not gonna hold up. You're gonna have huge bare spots.
That's, that's the same grass they use on golf courses.
Correct.
It doesn't turn brown in the wintertime, but...
It can't handle that heavy use.
Well, people walking on it during the wintertime.
That's a little bit different than playing soccer where you're grinding and churning, trying to hit the goals. I mean, it's just, it's hard. So we've talked to Spotsylvania County, King George County, Hanover County, who have all basically looked at Bermuda. Some of them had Bermuda and gave it up, and now they're all going to synthetic-type fields.
Did you ever consider Zoysia? Zoysia is the kind of grass they have at Madoff and I Springs.
So...
That does not go dormant.
It does not. In looking at the different kinds, having somebody to actually sprig that for us, we couldn't find a local sprigger to do that, to actually plant that. And then we also looked at the, how long of the maintenance it is, because it does go from mowing it right now once a week to having to mow it every three or four days. And it has to have a lot of water, so we don't have water out there. So we kinda get into that, not having the water, additional maintenance and grounds crew to do that.
I know you were gonna look at every possibility, and that's why I'm just asking you what each possibility resulted from.
No, we tried, it's, it's...
Okay. Let me see, the reason I talked to Mr. Sheeble about the parks, I'm looking at all the parks that are used in the county. I would like to see us lay out a plan for the parks as we move forward. Not necessarily get stuck in the weeds on whether it should be grass or turf, but lay out a plan that where we see quality parks within the county for the citizens. Because there are some pros and there are some cons to turf. And that's what I asked you to make sure you, when you have this conversation, make sure you do the research. Because I played on grass, I played on turf at every level, and grass is definitely better in terms of injuries. Now, I went today, well, actually last week, and I looked at simply, what are the pros and cons of astroturf and grass? There are some pros, there are some cons. For example, the plastics that are used in turf fields cause issue with young folks. The PFAS, again, the stuff that's, there are some issues, but there are some good things. Lower maintenance costs. Think that's one of the big ones. Doesn't require watering. The cost to replace, what do you do with the turf when you take it up? Who's responsible for getting rid of that? Because it's a bio-sol, so who, who takes care of that? So there are a lot of issues that I think, what I want to see, and this is why I brought this up. We've been talking about planning a new school and planning upgrades, but I wanna see upgrades for our citizens as well. I'd like to have a complex for Caroline County, a park that is top-notch. If we're looking down the road and we have things coming to Caroline that's going to bring in revenue, like I said, I wanna make sure that it's top-notch. I wanna make sure that it's a complex. I think there's enough land between the high school and the park to give us a quality park. One that we can hold events and different activities in the park. I was very disturbed over the last two or three Saturdays when I went to the park and I see people trying to push people in wheelchairs across these fields. It's not ADA accessible. We have to make sure that parents and grandparents are able to get to those children and see those children. That park is literally packed on Saturdays, packed.
Some of that is because in our effort of trying to revitalize the grass fields, the fields that are closest to the parking areas were chose to be done at the first phase. So now we've had to move things further back into the park, where normally they would be playing in that area. So next year, they'll be back in the area that's farther away will be closed down as we work through this transition.
Right, but that's my point. It's not what I would consider quality. It's not considered accessible. If we, I've been to many parks and many complexes across the state, and I played AAA softball at all the schools across the state. And there are some very nice high school complexes and county complexes that coexist together. That's what I want. I want something that we can be proud of. I'm not ready, as I told Mr. Black today. There are some things I like about a turf field, there are some things I don't like. I want to do the research because they're saying that they're not as safe as we think they are. The new ones with the rubber crumbs in them is what they're going, but those are not as safe as they think they are. They are a health hazard, is what they're saying. Because I read a, you know, I read a two-hundred-some pages about astroturf fields in terms of injuries. Lower extremity injuries, severity of injuries.
Non-contact injuries.
Yes, not, non-contact. So I wanna make sure we're doing the right thing, but what I do know, that we can design a quality park and then decide whether it's astroturf that we need or regular grass. I'd like to see us begin to design something that we can be proud of. That's what I want, when I said this.
The, you know, I've got one paragraph I'm gonna read just for the board, and then I'll leave this alone. But it's, "Staff's aware of the concerns regarding injuries sustained in artificial turf. However, artificial turf technology has advanced significantly over the past two decades. Numerous long-term studies spanning five to ten years indicate the injury rates per athlete exposed are notably lower than artificial turf than natural grass. So we provided eight different studies demonstrating the reduction in both severe and overall injuries compared to natural gas, yeah, natural grass. It is also important to note that the studies were conducted using professionally maintained college natural grass fields as the basis for this, their comparison. While public works strive to maintain our parks at a high standard, we readily acknowledge that our turf fields are not, will not match the quality of those in the college levels. Consequently, artificial turf, um, likely presents an even greater safety advantage when compared to our existing condition of our fields.
And I could probably find ten studies to say just the opposite, but that's the problem.
But I, but I think his, his point is valid, but the, the reality behind your point is we're not taking care of the fields we have to make them safer. That's the point.
But we don't have enough.
We would have to fence them off to prevent people from being on there. We would have to water them on a regular basis, um, and when, we would have to mow them at a greater rate than we are now. So it can be done.
Saying you're not doing a good job. I'm just saying, in order to have a real apples-to-apples comparison, we would have to maintain our fields better. But there, there's more to this whole issue is the schools want a turf field. They want a stadium with a turf field. They have the same thing. We've got all this joint property or, or property running up next to each other that we're not talking to them about or not getting some of their financing to help make this better. So there's more that has to go into this whole decision. Now, I'm, I'm not Mr. Underwood. He played on, on much higher levels than I did. But when, when AstroTurf first came out, I was still using a wooden bat at the time. So I'll tell you how old it was. It was basically a, a, a carpet rolled out on blacktop.
They were pretty bad back then.
And it hurt, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So now it's supposed to be better. You see it on TV, you see the little black dots and the things that, that cause the trail. Are those maintained better than anything we could possibly do? Of course they are. They got the best turf people in the world maintaining those fields. But, but where are we going to be in terms of maintenance? What can we afford? We spent a million dollars on the field, but we can't maintain it like they do. All of these things, and I know if we ask you to do all this, you will in, include all of that in your study because that's the way you do, and I appreciate that. So there, there's a lot more we have to put into this whole concept than I, I want six turf fields for six million dollars.
But can't we design a park and let the decision about the fields be? Yeah, later, but I'd like to see a design of what a quality park would look like, whether it's grass.
Can I, can I say?
Mister, Mister, Mr. Black has the floor, sorry.
I, 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 I think Mr., I, I think the point we're missing here is that he did come to us with a design. Um, we did have a design earlier on and we, we've, we've kicked this can down the road and kicked this can down the road. He did have, um, an area of like what he expected or what he wanted. Okay, excuse me, thank you. And the reality behind it is, um, we just keep on ignoring this. And we have, as, as, as he said, it's a highway. So unless we're, I, I don't understand, we have so many kids playing. The number one thing, if you ask, and my constituents are about as far from this park as probably of anyone in the county, maybe Port Royal. And I have not heard one complaint about the upgrades that we have done. Now, some people are upset about the pickleball, that they thought we wasted time. But that wasn't just pickleball, that was actually adding to help the, the, uh, the high school, the tennis courts. And it was lighting. So we have lights in here that are crumbling, okay? This is, I mean, in his report here, Mr. Sheeble laid out to the fact, laid out the fact that, um, we're out of, if you do the turf fields, you're out of space. So that would be pretty much it for this park. So we talked about designing a park, we've already got a beautiful park here. We have a beautiful park right now that has, that has done unbelievable upgrades over the past year, over the past years, Mr. Sheeble has done. The dugouts, um, the, the new amenities, the new restrooms, the upgraded restrooms, the, the walkways, um, all of the stuff that he has added, the pickleball courts, I mean, the walking trail. Over the last ten years, this has been the central park. This is the park that everyone, most everyone in the county is using. And if we're going to talk about one thing that we should do, we should work on this park. This is our park. Okay, we shouldn't be concentrating on a park in this district and a park in this district. This is the park that we should. This is, we have one, one big one that where everyone could invest money in. And if we want to start, like, if we want to start with, like, hey, we'll start small, start with a, a, a field or two, okay, with turf to see how people like it. If people like it or don't, then you, then, then we, we, we say, hey, if people don't like the turf field, then we, we don't continue with more turf fields. But you've got like a softball field that doesn't have lights. Uh, that doesn't even, to me, equal Title IX. How do you even get away with that? How can a softball program in Caroline High School not be able to do night games, but the boys can? And we, we haven't, we haven't funded that.
That's not the issue.
Yeah, but that is part of the issue, though. Like you, 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 yeah, that is part of the issue. How, that is not, that's an equity thing. Like, how do you say that's, that, that's even fair? So we have, we have lights that, in this report, we have lights at the, at the, at the field for the softball and baseball, um, that are structurally unsound. He's mentioned that before and we haven't done anything with it. So this is our park. So we talk about, oh, well, we got another park down there we gotta, we gotta, we gotta focus on. To me, we should be focusing on this and putting our money towards this. And there are, there are ways, I, I don't, I mean, building a new park, where are we going to build a new park? I mean, this is the park that everyone goes to. So why would we waste money building a whole new park somewhere else? This is the money that people, this is the park that people are going to. This is a one central located park. So I don't know, if you want to talk about saving money, building a new park somewhere else doesn't even make sense. That isn't even economically feasible. So why won't we, where we already have a park, why don't we just make improvements to what we've been doing already? And Mr. Sheeble, you've done an excellent job with that. So I think we need to keep on spending our money here. And yes, the people in this, this is, you're going to continue to see this, whether you have Zoysia or Bermuda or anything else, you're going to continue to see this mess right here. So that's it, that's what I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Um, we're not going to solve this tonight, but I will give everybody on the board a chance and to make a comment, and I think everybody has except for me. Uh, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into the field. I think it is better than it was before. Other still things that need to be done, yes, there are. Um, and what those are going to be are probably left to people wiser than me. I think everyone knows I have a, a very cautious image of turf, especially with our younger players. Uh, but things change and improve. I mean, I could drive a stick shift car, but none of my kids can. Uh, time goes on and things change. So I would hope that turf, uh, would get better also. And we'll have to make these decisions and this discussion will have to be held for a longer time. I will disagree slightly on one thing, however, I think that is our central park and it is beautiful. I was over there twice last year, it is beautiful. Um, but there's nothing wrong with also having a smaller park such as Lomasi Park, which your constituents are enjoying so much, uh, or someone that, you know, uh, maybe we get one over towards your area, which just has, you know, a place for pa- families to go and sit and enjoy the green and kick a ball around and be a family. Uh, that is something I think that's worth a work session at some time in the future. Um, the maintenance crew has done a wonderful job maintaining our main park. And if anything, the one thing that bothers me is seeing them work so hard and then seeing people who come from outside the county, and I know we can't tag people, but who just don't respect it and, uh, don't take care of it. And, uh, if we ever do go to turf or, or dress fields, I think we're going to have to think of some way to fence them in. And I don't like the looks of a lot of fences in parks, but we'll have to think about protecting our investment if that's what we need to do. And then the other thing is I will agree that we need to fix all the lights before they fall down on somebody, especially if we haven't, do we have any more of the wooden poles with the, we still have some of those?
We've got some wooden poles, you know, that I can put my fist halfway into a pole where the woodpeckers have just picked big holes in them.
Yeah.
Rappahannock Electric.
Was, we should go ahead and, and see if we could get that at a maintenance thing and get these done.
He, he gave us a list, Madam Chair, can we go through the list at least? If we're not going to talk about the fields tonight, at least some of the other things that he talked about, just because of the fact that those lights, I mean, if, if that's a danger to people who are playing on it, then, and we've talked about it and something happens, then I, I feel like we could be liable. Um, if you have a, if you, if he's saying you can put your fist through a hole, um, through a pole, then, then we have a problem.
And Rappahannock Electric, when I was talking with their pole inspectors, um, when we did our study, the original issue that they brought up to us, while we know there's a problem above ground, um, Rappahannock Electric said that the problem's going to be below ground is their biggest concern. Because I was looking for who do they use to inspect poles so we could get somebody to look at ours. Uh, and the problem is, is that the, because it's in, it's wet in the ground and you end up with the termites even in there, that they said what's below the ground that's unknown could be worse than what's actually known, which we know what's known is pretty bad. Um, and these poles are over thirty years old, so typically.
Don't put wooden poles up.
They're wooden poles now, but we'd go back with concrete.
Didn't replace them.
Well, we've asked. It's, it's been in the budget for the last five years and it hasn't been approved yet.
Yeah, we haven't, we've, we've rejected it on multiple occasions.
And now, in, in defense, Mr. Colley did have it in the budget. Um, COVID hit and then we froze that money and then it, that money kind of went back into the kitty so it never got re-appropriated back towards the, the ballfields.
This is what I'm talking about just earlier, that you have the ability to spend one-time money out of the unencumbered balance that would make an improvement. And we say, we're not going to do it. We're over the, um, the, the budget amount that we said that that's our policy. And here we are saying something that's dangerous, yet we refuse to fix it. That's asinine. That's absolutely asinine.
Well, I think we.
The things that are emergencies, we need to take care of. And this is an emergency.
And what was the number for, for repairing the lights?
Four hundred and five thousand now.
One cent. One cent on the tax.
We need to do that. Can I ask one other question? Would that also include the softball field?
No, that's another two hundred and sixty thousand.
You're talking about the school softball field?
No, we're talking about the, that was already done. The school softball field, the, the board authorized that and we, that's been done. But this is on the softball field next to the county's baseball field.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Just a quick question. Um, what, what does Hanover have for their field?
Which ones?
They have both.
They've got a bunch of fields.
Because they got both.
Well, when I'm going south down three oh one, I turn it the first thing and the first field I see is fenced. Because I was trying to go in there to see what they had, but it's fenced. So I take it that's their turf field?
Yeah, uh, to tell you the truth, I don't know what they have at that field. I know which ones you're talking about.
At Hanover, at Hanover High School?
Yes.
That's turf, the first one.
The first, as soon as you go in, you drive all the way, that's turf?
That's turf.
Okay, the reason I ask that question is that's fenced. So I, I couldn't get out of the car and actually see what it was because I couldn't get in close enough. Well, I could, but I chose not to. So.
That's where, that's your football field, though.
That concept is what we're going to have to consider. Fencing, which should be part of your process when you come back to us to say, if I do this one field, I have to put this fence up to protect this one field.
So when we looked at that and, and talking with the individuals, um, we don't have an issue with, with vandalism, um, on the fields. Really what we have is, is sometimes in the bathroom area, we've got people that, that do problems and have issues in there. But, uh, the fields themselves, it's not because they're being abused, it's because they're being used. Um, we've got people that come in and you'll see a hundred people out there on the weekends that are using them other than our programs. And they're not abusing them, they're just using them and the fields aren't designed for that type of use. Where if you actually put a turf field in, they could play on that all day long and it would not hurt that at all and be ready to play the next day. So, you know, we, we talked about whether to fence, if we actually own artificial turf and you didn't actually have a football stadium where you're trying to protect the rest of that investment, um, you know, there's not really a way them playing on it to hurt the field. So we think you would be, actually be able to meet both purposes without fencing that, which is really the idea of a park to be able to come and use it.
Excuse me, I've got a, a, a question on, on that one topic. If they were open and if the park and recs officials wanted to have a club or, or reserve, like they reserve picnic areas and that type of thing, wouldn't a fence come in handy? And on times when it wouldn't be used, you just not lock the gate or leave the gate open?
So on those fields, because they're already lined permanently, so you're not worried about somebody messing that up, you're not having to drag a field and you've got all kinds of people out there playing on there and worried about if it's wet, they're tracking and making mud holes. You don't have any of those issues with turf. When the fields that we have today, we would allow, we actually brought it up to the board about the baseball field, about trying to fence that off because we get the fields ready to play, um, and then you get groups out there that tear it all up by using it prior to the, the game starting. Or it rains and if you step in it, you're leaving two, three inch, you know, imprints that just make the fields hard to recover. So we wanted it for those fields. Um, you know, for a soccer field, I really don't, we can fence them, but there's not really a, a need to fence them at this point.
Fields would need to be turfed.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I, my feeling is the first priority is to get the lights.
Yes, all the light, all the, all the lights.
Because, and we can deal with mud and dead grass for another year if we can get, keep somebody from falling. But we need to look at finances, I think, and what is allowed, what we can afford to put into it.
Mrs. Long?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Can I make a motion that we, um, do the lighting, which is all the lighting, um, tonight? So he said the two packages of lighting, six hundred thousand for the fields. And then we come back, um, in a couple of months to discuss, um, when he comes up with a new, um, when he comes up with a new, like, um, drawings and schematic for the fields, then we can talk about turf fields then. So right now it would just be lighting.
Mr. Black, i- i- if the board i- is willing to do that, I would say it's six hundred and sixty-five thousand for those two and then there's a contingency, so add ten percent. So if it was seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and of course, we're going to go with the contract and come back and have you approve that. But if we can approve up to seven twenty-five or allow me at least to move forward, I'll get pricing and bring back and tell you exactly what it's going to cost.
So how about that, move forward with pricing? Part, part of the, the other thing, yeah, right.
Mr. Colley, are you shaking your head now? Don't shake your head now and not get up and say anything.
So this is just for the baseball field and softball field. This wouldn't include the soccer field or even a proposed football field because we had originally talked about a football field that we could then break into soccer also.
But see, that's where we need to talk to schools about. If we're going to do a football field, let's do the football field. Let's do it right and stop patching things. I'm not saying this is your fault, I'm saying this is everybody's fault. Because we, we're not talking to the schools about it. We should, we should be saying, this is what we're going to do. We're going to give you the AstroTurf field, we're going to build a stadium or whatever. That's what we need to be doing.
Wouldn't be putting down.
Maybe not build a stadium, but that, that would have been better.
I thought we did the lights at the football field.
Oh, yeah, this is.
We just did that, right?
We haven't done like, we did bleachers.
I'm just talking about.
We did bleachers and they did some work on their field, but they want a turf field at the.
Not talking about lights.
I know they do.
The lights.
Because we added a control system for.
We did lights.
Yeah, they got lights.
They got lights.
Yeah, we did lights.
My, my, what I was asking about were the lights that didn't get replaced that are in dangerous.
That's on a baseball field.
Right.
That's four hundred and five thousand three fifty. There's also a softball field next door to that that's not lit at all currently. That's two sixty, one fifty.
And that's where girls play?
Yes, where the girls, the high school or middle school girls, or middle school girls play there. But there's no lights, they have to finish up.
Girls play on the other side.
High school girls have their own field. We have bleachers and stuff.
Right, we fixed that one up.
This is for the middle.
This is the middle school. Um.
Middle school uses the, the, the park.
Right.
Correct, and it's not lit.
Right.
So typically, typically when the kids come in.
Yeah, they do.
For middle school, they bring in the, the girls and the boys' middle school teams at the same time and play on our fields at the same time. So one of them's lit, one of them's not. So they continue on the boys until they're done and the girls, when it gets dark, they stop.
See, and that's again where, why are we, why are we saying that schools are doing this and that and we don't have any idea what they're doing? We should be talking to them too as part of this and saying, this is part of what we're giving you to use. That's all I'm saying, but, but we're going to fix the light.
Good point, but I just don't want to pull the ball.
We're going to fix both the lights.
And fix both of those, the, the softball and baseball, replace the, uh, lights on the baseball and put up new lights on the softball. Uh, the cost is seven twenty-five, um, five hundred, um, out of the fund balance.[1770.22]
Uh, the cost is seven twenty-five, um, five hundred, um, out of the fund balance. We're not talking about borrowing.
Right, right.
The borrowing man just left, so.
So, yeah, we want him to go, cause-
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Now, the, now the reality is, if I put these lights up and then decide to go back and go to a turf field, do I have to tear the lights down?
So we didn't do soccer. So if you did the soccer fields, that's what I'm saying, that, that, i- if you wanted to do that, you really need to consider what the permanent solution's gonna be, cause I don't wanna go in and do that if we don't know what we're doing.
We don't do that. Not right, not right.
Uh, yeah, baseball and softball, we're good. All day long.
We're not gonna be three river stadium with, with turf?
Maybe.
So we have a, um, chairman, I made the motion to do the baseball-
But I can't see doing the middle.
Chairman, I made the motion to the baseball and softball field.
I have a motion on the table by Mr. Black to do the, uh, baseball and softball field.
Lights.
With, with, for the, the lights.
At the county park.
At the county park to repair the, uh, replace the old poles that are damaged and to provide light for the girls team. Do I have a second?
I'm gonna second that to, to start discussion to make sure we all understand. So I'll, I'll make the second.
All right, I got a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I don't understand why we're, if the middle school doesn't play in the evening on that soccer field, I mean, base, softball field, why are you putting lights there?
They do.
They play at night?
They, in the evenings, they play till dark and then the girls stop and the boys continue, cause they have lights typically.
But there are no lights on that, on that field, right?
Not on the girls' team. There's none at all.
We have lights on the baseball field.
Correct.
But we have none on the field next to it.
Correct.
Which is used by, the softball field is on the other side.
They're, they're-
The high school, the high school softball field, where we put the bleachers is on the other side of the parking lot.
That's it. That's in the high school. We're talking about the two, the baseball softball field side of the-
The middle school.
No, the middle school uses that. So there was a question about the, being used. The boys' middle school team uses our baseball field to play their games. The girls' middle school uses our softball field to play their games. They generally come, the school will come in with both those teams and play at the same time.
Right.
On our fields.
On the, on the-
But they're, you know-
Park fields.
Correct.
On the park field. See, that's, that's what we need to say, be specific about.
Right, he's at the park field.
On the school softball field.
Not on the school, this, they don't have a school field. We're not talking about schools.
They don't have a school field for the middle school.
Not for the middle school.
Correct. That's what he's saying plays is the middle school people. The high school plays on high school field.
Yes.
That the county contributed funds to fix them up to standard.
I can't do that.
But now we can't, we can't necessarily say we're gonna put lights on the, on the boys' baseball field and not on the girls' softball field.
It's not, it's not the boys' baseball field, it's the county-
It's the county park. You're right.
It's not the boys or girls.
Correct, correct. Cause I just said, let's make sure we say it, and then I didn't do the right thing. So on the county field, the county baseball field, we have lights.
We have lights.
That are in bad shape.
We need to replace.
We are gonna replace those lights.
Yes.
We all agree.
Hundred percent.
On the county softball field, which is used by girls, mostly, even, even park programs for softball, has no lights at all.
I don't see Mr. Howard shaking his head up and down yet. So I'm just, I, I'm just watching the audience because my other, my other, you know, we're talking about county facilities. Has anybody been in the restrooms off of this ba, off this basketball court that's right here at the community services building? Ever been in there?
The bathroom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what ba, no, you should say what bathrooms?
The bathroom's right here.
Yeah, and the showers? You seen them lately?
We can, we can take that up at another time. I mean, we're talking about the county park.
That's part of the plan. Just like the additional soccer field. See, we're running, we, we get run roughshod over again. We don't, we, we, we hone in, we hone in, we hone in, we hone in, we don't finish. Because there's no new soccer fields being even discussed tonight. All I'm hearing is turf fields, cause that's the priority, not more fields, which is what we need. Because the use could go down and you could rotate fields and we don't do that, cause we don't have them. So the bottom line is, where would the new soccer fields go if we built them? Do they go on the high school, on the middle school side? Or do they stay on the park side?
So they could go between the animal shelter and the park on the other side of the parking area that's currently there.
Okay, I'm not asking for an answer tonight. I'm saying, we're talking about planning. See, we've gone from planning to we're buying lights. We're not even talking about a plan now, we're buying lights.
We have a problem with structure.
This whole topic was about a plan, not buying stuff. And here we are, we're buying lights, when what Mr. Underwood asked for was potential improvements. And we're, we're now, we're, we're buying something. And I'm not disagreeing with that the light poles aren't bad, cause I know they are. But where is the rest of the story? Where is the additional fields that would solve some of these problems? That's what I'd like to see an answer to.
So really, so the question was, is Mr. Howard, who runs our Parks and Rec program, said that if he had synthetic field-
I, I'll stop with the synthetic fields. I want, no, no, no. I wanna see a plan with additional fields and stop with the turf, because-
We can provide-
The first thing that comes out in this thing, the first topic is turf fields. We gotta have turf fields, not more fields, not a plan, but turf fields.
We, we looked at more fields.
Wait, Mr. Sheeble- I've never looked at more fields.
I think-
This is my point of real problem.
Can I call a question? We have a motion and a second about the lights.
We're still in discussion.
I'm calling, calling the question.
We would need a, well, I'm not-
I think we would need a sec. Do we need, do we take a vote on that? Somebody help?
Yes, can you take a vote?
On if we're going to discuss it or not?
I think we should discuss it, cause that was- As, um, you know, with Mr. Sealy, I understand, but if we have a safety issue, I wanna address that one safety issue and come back with a plan for the rest of, I don't think we need to extend that. Cause I do think the number of fields is the issue. And that's what I was hoping, that we would get to, is a design, to bring us something, to have a park that meets all of our needs in terms of fields and everything else. Whether it's turf or not, that's not part of the discussion. But as a result, we came up with an issue of safety, as far as I'm concerned, that we need to address as the board, cause that falls within our purview. And we want things to be safe. So I think we need the lights for the field immediately.
Baseball.
For the baseball. And we stop there and we come back with the plan to look at other possibilities.
But, but now-
But we take care of the immediate issue, which is safety.
And I, I agree with exactly what you're saying. However, we may have additional benefits from the volume of scale, because we're gonna get lights where we need lights. But we're also gonna look at lights at the softball field, knowing that has nothing to do with our additional soccer field issue. The softball field's gonna be the softball field.
Right.
Whatever we do, turf fields, non-turf fields, has nothing to do with the softball.
Right.
We have an additional chance to say, it's gonna cost me six hundred thousand for these lights. But if I get this set of lights, maybe instead of four hundred thousand, it costs me three fifty. I might save a dollar or two, because I'm doing those two projects. We, we're eventually gonna put lights on that softball field.
If we save money, I can see us doing that. But I'd like to know that we're gonna save-
Well, he's gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pass this motion. He's gonna go back and, and get us prices and come back and tell us where he saved some money. And then we're gonna go ahead and give him the authority to do it.
Mr. Mr. Black, would you restate your motion, please?
Um, my motion was to do the, uh, to do the, fix the lights of the baseball field and to do lights at the softball field. Not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then he'll come back with the, with the prices for us for a final, for a final vote. Yes.
But he's gonna show you where he saved money. So it's gonna come back for a final vote. If he doesn't save money, then we'll just do the one we said.
So since, so, since you're, since we're coming back, we still need to vote to get him to do it.
Yes.
We've got the motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, we already had a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? One opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Nay by Mr. Underwood. Um, so we have a pass motion and you will come back with figures. And we will see a quote before anything is purchased, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. I, I mean, Mr.-
And, and we'll be glad to-
They want a roll call vote.
The roll call?
We did look at, at soccer fields and we can bring that back, uh, putting additional fields there. Um, the discussion also was, the populace of the county is, is on the western side of the county. And eventually a park would need to be built over there, which we would have additional fields to separate some of that usage. I know tonight's discussion was in one location. Um, so we can look at expanding that here, um, and add additional fields. That's not a problem. Um, the bathrooms here, just as, because it was brought up, um, we did ask for and was included in this year's budget, twenty-five thousand dollars to design the bathrooms. So as part of our architectural services, one of the task contracts will be coming back to you to actually expend those funds to design the two bathrooms in, in our current gym here at Community Services Center. So we're gonna have money in the budget for next year, um, to hopefully replace those bathrooms and upgrade this.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeble. All right, so we're good?
Mr. Sheeble, thank you. I mean, I, I've gotten more compliments about how good that park is. And I gotta be honest, I just, I, I haven't been over there that much, but the people that go over there love our park. They say how amazing it is. So I, I appreciate, I know there's a lot of hard work that you've done, so I, I do appreciate it.
My staff has done an amazing job and they take pride in the county park. Um, and, and you know, as you're thinking about what we want in the park, it's easier to say we want it bigger and better. Um, but having the better, more tangible ideas does help a lot. We did a park plan out there in the late nineties. We were actually supposed to have a swimming pool out there and a football stadium that was put into that plan years ago. So I'm not advocating for a pool nor a football field really. Um, but I'm just saying, there were these ideas that were out there by, you know, a committee that was put together, looking at our park system and what the overall design of that park could be. Um, but I definitely think that, you know, having the soccer fields will make a, and, and a difference on, in how to play and give us more usable space.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheeble.
Save us money on both of them.
Always save us money. All right, that brings us down to, uh, informational calendars, Mr. Sealy. I mean, Mr. Colley. I've been up since three o'clock, so you all have to give me a pass.
We'll be quick. Y'all have announced most of your things. We have, uh, Mr. Black and Mr. Foran's community meeting tomorrow night at six thirty. Uh, Music on the Green on Friday, Harvest Festival on Saturday. There is a VDOT public hearing on Route three oh one and the pedestrian improvements in the town of Bowling Green, um, on the Thursday, the twenty-third. That's at five PM. I'm pretty sure it's in Town Hall. Oh yes, right there, Town Hall. Good, I agree. Uh, Frog Level, uh, on Regular Festival on the twenty-fifth. Um, remember Election Day, we're now closed on the fourth of November. VACO Annual Conference starts on the eighth, uh, through the eleventh. And of course, there's Veterans Day. There will be a Veterans Day ceremony at, uh, the courthouse as always. And then the note, the next board meeting is the, uh, thirteenth Thursday night. Mark that on your calendars, the thirteenth, uh, Thursday night. So those are the things we have. Um, and we included your capital projects and we're working on updating that, uh, even more as we move into the next budget year. So that's a quick overview of what's going on for the calendar.
Because- Now, now, Mr. Colley, all of the things that are in the status of capital projects constitute the county CIP. So if somebody asks, what's the, what's in the county CIP, or does the county have a CIP, this is what it is.
Yeah, they're, they're in three. Uh, the, you, the one that says, uh, active capital projects general is three oh one. Uh, uh, then you've got utilities, which is in, actually Fund five oh two, and then you've got school projects in three oh four. So it's three different funds, Fund three oh one, Fund five oh two, and utilities.
General fund doesn't say three oh one, but these are your accounting, these are your accounting, uh, business units or whatever. I forgot what they're called and-
Right.
Okay, so-
And not, not, nothing like that is in the general fund. It's all in three other funds.
But the reality is, these are the things the county is, is working on in terms of long-range capital projects.
Correct. Things that's, sometimes we use, uh, across multiple years to get them complete.
Yes, and sometimes they're in here and they never get accomplished or get delayed for a long time, like-
Correct.
Other things, okay.
We prioritize out of the three ca, out of the three, since they're in three categories. How, how are we prioritizing?
We prioritize each one in each cat, in each category. They just stand on their own, as far as, we don't look at stuff in the, in, uh, utilities versus what we do in schools. And so it's, it ultimately depends on how much money we have and how much money we're willing to borrow for whatever project. So the school's got the biggest borrowing when we did the, you know, ARPA money and then our borrowing for their all total eleven million dollar, uh, middle school project.
But we've got like sixteen million dollars in utilities.
Correct. That's a, that's usually, I mean, that's, we borrowed twenty-some million dollars in utility. We have not been able, as you know, with our getting right easements and things. And we started part of that project, but we, we not on the biggest part of it. And we're probably back when we bid that out and need more money, seeing as how that was planned prior to inflation.
Yeah, but, but, but when somebody says, what is the county really doing? And, and the reason I'm harping on this is, is because of people ask, what is the county's long-term plan? What's the county's strategic plan? And basically, our CIP is the-
Right, and this is just an active project. The CIP's got a bunch more projects in it that aren't necessarily funded in this current year.
That are probably not funded, yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Colley. I think that brings us down to, uh, closing board comments. Mr. Uh, Black?
Um, no, I don't have any at this time.
Mr. Thomas?
I, I need to, to say that we, we need to talk to the schools about our, our additions and, and future planning and a strategic plan with them about what the county can, can do, finance when it can and can't. But it is time to meet with them. It's been time for a while. I think I volunteered a few months ago and we haven't gotten anywhere.
I will talk to Mr. Colley about calendar dates and getting, uh, lining up with the schools. Um-
I'm waiting for our MOU.
Mr. Underwood?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Um, I wanna thank everybody for being here and hanging in with us. Um, and we will have our next, well, I'll probably see a lot of people on Saturday. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna read it.
We are not, we are not gonna, we're, we're gonna go in, we have a closed session. Um, so I don't know who will be here when we get out, but thank you all for, for caring and being here. And we will see you again in our next board meeting, if you're not here when we come back out. Mr. Sealy, will you please call, uh, read us into the closed session?
Yes, I will. I move that this board convening closed meeting pursuant to the personnel and cons, and consultation with legal counsel under exemption, section two dot two dash three, seven, one, one, dot, A, dot, one, N, dot, A, dot, eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with county attorney and discussion with administration to discuss personnel matters relating to the Department of Planning and Community Development and consultation with legal counsel and probable litigation exemptions under section two dot two dash three, seven, one, one, dot, A, dot, eight, N, dot, A, dot, seven, uh, A, dot, seven of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney to discuss potential litigation matter involving out-of-the-county fire and rescue operations and the cybersecurity and consultation with legal counsel exemption under two point two dash three, seven, one, one, dot, A, dot, nineteen, N, dot, eight of the Code of Virginia for consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding specific information, technology, security concerns for individuals accessing county services.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session. Thank you. Thank you.